Hey, Riff listeners, thanks for tuning in again today. We've got a brand new episode for you. We've got Jeremy sitting down with Springfield City Councilman Abe McGaul, and he shares his story and journey of leadership. Let's go for it.
Well, welcome to another episode of The Riff. Today, we have an opportunity to have a conversation with my friend Abe McGaul. And so, welcome all of you Riff listeners and welcome Abe. Good to have you on The Riff.
Thank you, Jeremy. It's such a pleasure to be here with you.
Well, I hope you still feel that way at the end. I'm delighted I was able to talk to you a little bit about this and for you to accept the invitation is just great. So, a little context for those who are listening is we're in this series right now. We've been walking through what it means to be a sheep in our series, Leader Sheep. What does it mean to be a follower? And even if we have influence, how do we take that influence and reflect Jesus, reflect a blessing to our community, even in any area we lead? And so, with that, I thought, just a natural conversation to talk with you. So, what I want to do is I want to hear a little bit of your journey, but right now, you serve as one of the Springfield councilmen, right?
I do. I'm the Zone 2 Councilman. That's the area that's geographically located, everything north of Sunshine and north of and east of National.
Okay. North Sunshine, east National.
East National. So, that's my geographic zone 2. A lot of people, MSU isn't part of that, and that's why I serve the citizens in Springfield.
That's great. How long have you been serving in this role?
I've been on the city council now for about two years. So, it's been great, two and a half years.
Okay.
It's a four-year term.
Wow. Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna dive into some of that, some of the challenges in that role, some of the things that you've been really excited to be a part of in that role. But I want to pull the string and go way back. So, tell us a little bit about who Abe McGaul is. Growing up, just kind of early formative years, what do we know about you?
Well, you know, I kind of grew up down in Louisiana. I'm what you call a Creole Cajun. So, I grew up in Nouvelle Olymne, as we say down in French, but it's New Orleans.
Okay. Okay. I was gonna guess New Orleans on that one, or Shreveport. I didn't know which one that was.
Yeah, I grew up down in New Orleans where the food is great and the people are friendly.
Now, I've had Popeye's Chicken. So, does that mean I could relate?
That's it. Exactly. Spicy food. That's what we're known for. And I kind of grew up there and came to Christ when in my early years as an elementary school.
Did you have a family that was really into faith at the time?
I did. My mother used to, people say, drag me to church. And as a young kid, I'd be in the pew and fall asleep, she would pinch me awake when I fell asleep. So, but yeah, I did. I kind of.
We need some of those moms at North Point, because sometimes I'm not sure everyone's praying in the auditorium. Sometimes I think they're sleeping when I'm speaking. That's all right. So, you grew up in that setting? And does that mean like you were the model kid growing up? Is that?
Oh, model kid? No, indeed. Not at all. But I did, my formative years down there, and I grew up in an area called the Lower Night Ward. You probably saw some of that in Katrina that were affected heavily about the storm. But went to undergraduate school at LSU. Go Tigers!
Go Tigers! C E A U X. Go Tigers!
That's right. And went to graduate school at Southern University and decided to go to law school in the Midwest. I went to UMKC Law School, Kangaroo.
So, how do you go from Louisiana, because Southern's in Louisiana?
Yeah.
And how do you, what brought you to UMKC?
You know, that's an interesting story. I'm a big-time golfer, so every afternoon.
I've golfed with you.
That's right. We have golfed together.
I don't know if you're big time, because I can't tell from my perspective. All I know is you're a lot better than me.
Oh, good. But every afternoon in the South, it rains. And I looked on the map after I graduated from graduate school, I said, looked on the map and I said, "Where's the least amount of rainfall?" It was Kansas City.
Really?
So, I said, "I'm going to law school in Kansas City so I could golf quite a bit." So, I decided to go to law school.
And were you able to golf quite a bit up there?
I did. Not so much in my first year of law school, but I did in my second and third year of law school.
Okay, so law school, what was that like?
Oh, it's like a huge, it's like a hazing on steroids.
I've seen some Matt Damon movies. Is it close?
The first year of law school is very challenging. Very challenging. Challenging not only to yourself intellectually, emotionally, but also to your faith. You gotta really have faith to get to law school.
Wow. Had you done pre-law Southern, or what was your master's?
Actually, I've done, my undergrad was in broadcast journalism.
Okay.
And I got my master's in mass communication. So, I worked at a television station in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, when I was going through college and grad school.
And what was your role there?
I was a news photographer. You know, I had the, you know, in the television business, if it bleeds, it leads. And that's what we did. We did quite a bit of work. I did a lot of spot news, won a number of awards, actually videotaped a murder. But that's for a different news story. I mean, for a different session.
Well, that sounds like we're gonna book a part two sometime.
That's right.
So, you're doing news at the same, at the time, were you doing news thinking that might be career broadcast? Or were you thinking this is the portal into law?
Actually, it was. At a very early age, I decided I wanted to be a lawyer. I don't know why. I don't know if it was the many episodes of Perry Mason's that my mother watched. But as a young boy, I always wanted to be a lawyer. And broadcast journalism in English was kind of like the entryway or good skill set to have going to law school. So, it worked out well.
Wow. And so, you go to UMKC during that time, when you, when you, when you're able to finish your degree, did you go right into a practice, or what did that look like?
Well, I did several things. After I decided to go law school, sorry about that.
That's all right. The city doesn't sleep. Take what you need to.
No, that's all right. When I decided to go to law school, I had all that experience in journalism. So, what am I gonna do with that experience? So, I decided to join the Navy Reserve. So, I joined the Navy Reserve when I was getting, when I was in law school. So, I was able to do, continue to do my Navy Reserve through law school and also through my career as a lawyer.
So, did you go to Great Lakes for training?
I did. I went to Great Lakes at one point and to another place called Knife and Fork School in Pensacola.
As officer training?
Yeah, officer training. So, yeah.
Okay, my father-in-law was in the Navy.
Is that right?
Yeah, he was Admiral Chief Chaplain. So, we would go visit. And Knife and Fork School is something my mother-in-law wishes she could send me to. So, I'm not quite officer behaved, but that's all right. So, you reserve, how long were you in the reserves?
I was in the reserve for 21 years. And after I graduated from law school, I was able to do both careers at the same time, Navy Reserve. But also, at one point after graduating from law school, went to the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. Then I got hired by the US Attorney's Office. I worked for the Department of Justice for 21 years as well. So, I was able to retire from both jobs. I retired from the Navy after 21 years and also retired from the Department of Justice. Now, I have my own private practice.
Okay, so, so you were a federal prosecutor?
Yes.
For 21 years?
21 years. Yeah.
And what were, is there a typical type of case or work that you were involved in in that season? Or is that so varied?
It was varied. I did terrorism cases. I did some violent crime cases. I had a number of white-collar prosecutions. So, it was a variety of stuff I did. So, yeah, it was, it was great. It was a wonderful career. And one of the things I learned about being a federal prosecutor, you have a tremendous amount of power and just of the decisions you make in terms of prosecuting an individual. So, yeah.
So, what does that look like? Like, where would that power come out? Is the verdict in your hands? Is it jury? What were the pressures and things you had to consider?
Well, part of the pressures is the initial decision-making process of what you're gonna do with this individual. What charges are you gonna give or exact on that person? What kind of plea, if there's a possibility of a plea agreement? And how much time, you advocate for how much time that individual should serve in prison. So, it is, it is.
So, were there, were there different cases that you would take home with you? Is it easy to let work be work? Or how did you figure that out?
Well, you know, I'm kind of the person who let work be work. I mean, there were times when we had to get ready for trial and that kind of stuff. And you kind of take some of that home a little bit, but for the most part, I tried to balance my life, have that life balance between work and also family. So, it's important to have. It really is.
So, 21 years, were you able to do that from wherever, or were you assigned different locations?
I was, I was very fortunate in with the US Attorney's Office. I was able to work and then do, also do some work overseas. I did a detail, what we call a detail in another country. I went to Iraq for almost two and a half years and served there in the province of Kirkuk, worked with the Kurdish people there. After the war, the Operation Iraqi Freedom, we had to help in the system rebuild their country. So, part of the DOJ role was to make sure that the rule of law was enforced under their laws and make sure that the judiciary system and the legal system worked properly.
What were some of the challenges you faced internationally?
Oh, some of the challenges that we don't face here is that it was a big security issue. Judges had to make decisions on terrorists, and if they did, sometimes they would end up being killed themselves. So, the security issue of the judiciary was important. Making sure also the law enforcement understood that evidence-based prosecution was the way to go and not torture. They had torture. I had the, one of the first cases in which a police officer was prosecuted by the Iraqi legal system for torturing an individual to death. So, yeah, it was quite challenging and also going to work was challenging. People were trying to bomb us and kill us, and those are kind of challenges you don't normally have on your way to work.
No. No, my biggest challenge sometimes is not spilling the coffee on my lap.
That's right.
Wow. At what point in this law career did you, was it obvious to you that this is what you were born to do?
I think it was. I mean, it really was. I think about several things. I think Jesus was probably the ultimate lawyer.
How so?
I so, because I think about that, I always go back to that scene in which the woman was about to be stoned to death by a group of angry men because she had committed adultery. And I could just picture that in my head, that scene, these men with their stones in their hands, they angry, upset, and the woman in a fetal position all in the center of this circle. And Jesus pops up in the scene and he says, you know, they ask him and say, "Hey, you know, the law says that this woman who committed adultery should be stoned to death. What do you say?" And he just kind of writes something down on the ground and he stands up and he finally says, "He without sin, let them cast the first stone." And one by one, they leave and walk away convicted with their own sin. You know, it's just amazing. I said, "What a closing argument he made for that woman there."
Yeah.
Oh, that was great. And I think about all the things that where I am today has to do a lot with my faith and belief in Jesus Christ and what he has done, not only in my life, but many other people in our lives. And we're so blessed in this nation. The fact that I've been overseas, I'm able to see how blessed we are. Spending time in Iraq, I spent some time in Qatar. I've been all over the world with the Navy. It doesn't get any better than this. It really is. We really are blessed.
What have you learned about God from your unique perspective is having to play, you know, someone who would be the prosecutor or in seeing so many statements or situations with judges and whatnot, what have you learned about God through that process?
You know, tempering justice with mercy. That's what I've learned.
Well, how would you describe that?
You know, there's a lot of times in our lives, we've done things and we've been forgiven by God for those things we've done. But he's always tempered his justice with mercy for us, you know? We don't deserve what God has given us, but he's given us to us. But we should also extend that to others. I'm so, you know, I think that the two commandments, like Jesus said one time, or all the commandments, what are the two that are most important? Love God with all your heart and love each other. If we did more of that, where would we be as a nation?
Wow.
We would be far beyond where we are today, you know, and the life would be a whole lot better. And I think it would be less work for prosecutors, I think, if we did that.
Yes. Yeah, I know that some who might be listening is, you know, sometimes our tendency, especially if we've been around faith enough to know that what we're doing is wrong. And I know scripture does say that our heart even testifies against us. But sometimes the knowledge that what we've done is not just is what condemns us. And to know that if there's a trial, our goose is cooked.
Yeah, you're right.
But we have an advocate in Jesus. And so, I hope everyone's encouraged on that. Tell us a little bit about what is your current law firm? What are you currently focusing on?
Well, my current focus now is I do, I'm on the opposite side of the V, but I'm always on the side of justice. That's what I tell people. They say, "Well, you were the prosecutor. Now you're defending people who have committed crimes and that kind of stuff." So, I say, "Yeah, well, you know, everyone, every person is entitled to their constitutional rights." It may not necessarily, you may see, for example, that a person committed a crime, but it's important that the process be followed. We can't have police officers violating the constitution, doing illegal searches and seizures because there's a means of which, the process in which we all adopted as citizens of this nation to follow. So, now I do some criminal defense. I also do personal injury. I do a lot of cases involving individuals who may have been injured or wrongful death cases where people might die because of a motor vehicle accident or because of a tractor-trailer accident or those kind of things, or somebody who may be incarcerated that was, wasn't given the adequate amount of medical attention. So, I do those wrongful death cases. And I'll do some, some small business litigation as well.
Yeah. So, and then, you know, in all your free time, so you've retired from two careers.
That's right. That's right.
So that you can start a new one?
Yep.
And you golf?
I do. Not as much, not as much as I would like to.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. So, a married man, very busy, finally gets to the time where it could be all about you. And then city council, two and a half years ago. So, tell me about that journey.
I'm a glutton for punishment. I'm a glutton for punishment.
I want to dive into that. At what point did you start thinking, "I might be interested in running for city council?" And why?
Well, actually, the previous city council member actually came to me and said, "You know what? I'm thinking about not running again. Would you be interested in a job?" I said, "What's wrong with this picture? You're fighting hard to get off to the council and offer me the job. Does that mean it's a tough job?" It is a tough job. You know, I think, I used to be a mayor of Pleasant Valley, Missouri. I was on the city council in Pleasant Valley, Missouri, and became mayor of Pleasant Valley. And there's a lot that you can do on a, on a very basic level in government to help and improve the lives of the citizens in that municipality. And I see that as a role, almost like a servant leader, that we all have an obligation to make society better, to make the place where we live better. And government is a means and mechanism of doing that. So, I know a lot of people expect us to do more, and they think we can do more, but we got, we are guided by the constitution, Missouri constitution and the US constitution in terms of our action and the decision-making process. That's what I utilize whenever a decision I make. I look at those two particular doctrines, as well as the city charter, and say, "Is this the right thing to do?" You know, even though whatever decision you make, you're gonna tick off somebody. You're gonna make somebody angry.
So, that happens in a city council role?
Oh, I'll never forget this. When I ran for mayor in Pleasant Valley, I ran against the incumbent. And I never forget what my campaign managers told me. He said, "I got good news and bad news for you." I said, "Well, go ahead. Tell me what's the good news? The good news is you won the election with 72% of the vote."
Wow.
I said, "Well, what's the bad news?" He said, "The bad news is once you stop making decisions, you'll never see those numbers again." And he was right. Right.
So, I, I've watched probably a handful of city council meetings. I've been on social media and it's, there's such a loud opinion of decisions that are made in local government.
Right.
How, how does that impact city council members or you? I mean, to have, I don't know if it's the age of social media where everybody's voice can be heard. How does that impact you?
Well, you know, social media is one of the ways in which we receive information and input from citizens. I have an email address. I also meet with citizens every fourth Wednesday by appointment at City Hall from 9:00 to 10:00. So, any member of the city who would like to sit down and talk to me and tell me about their particular issue or their concern, they can meet me for a cup of coffee and donuts on the fourth Wednesday of every month at 9:00. So, and that, the social media is another way. We receive quite a bit of emails on a daily basis from citizens. I just, yesterday, I went to a new development that some of the citizens were upset about or concerned about. And to go to that location and see for myself, what are some of the issues there? But yeah, you know, sometimes you get, you know, you're sitting at dinner somewhere and somebody says, "Hey, city councilman person, I have an issue. Why don't you tell me about it?" So, yeah, I don't think there's any shortage of means in which the citizens reach out. They're not bashful about that.
Yeah. What are some of the, what are some of your biggest hopes and dreams for the Springfield area?
Well, you know what? I am so positive and so excited about Springfield. I believe it's on the cusp of greatness. It really is. It's growing in a number of ways, in terms of development, in terms of industries moving here. We get into Buc-Ee's, by the way.
I'm excited about that. You know, I might have to get rid of my Sam's Club membership and just start grocery shopping at Buc-Ee's.
That's right. But it's a, it's a great place and we have Mueller's, what you think about it. We have so many different industry, Bass Pro. This is a city that has such a diverse number of business, small businesses here. I found out the other, a couple of months ago, there's a guy that makes holsters that's sold all over the world. I mean, I just say, right here in Springfield. So, it's that kind of dreams and hopes and aspirations and being on city council, sometimes you get to see behind the curtain, things that are coming. So, I'm very positive about the things that are coming here. But I also look at the fact that this new development and growth also helps our, you know, local citizens in terms of our graduates from both the OTC as well as, as our universities, MSU, Drury, because those individuals graduating from college or the, or the trade school need a job. And so, it's so nice to know that we have the industry here that can employ those, our graduates. That way, we keep our sons and daughters home as well as then exporting them to other states. So, they'll be right here in Springfield. So, I'm excited about it. I think a lot of great things about to happen in the city, you know, Dream Center for being one of those things, reaching out to our, to our, you know, impoverished community as well as those who are unsheltered. So, I'm excited. I really am excited.
I don't want to get you in trouble, but just blink twice if there's more Waffle Houses coming. I just, I'm just, we just have a big demand.
You and I have something in common. I like to go around to different Waffle Houses.
That's good. What are some of the challenges that, that seem to be there in the Springfield area that we can't shake?
Well, there's several challenges, and that is the homeless population. I've been calling for a task force where we can focus our attention on that particular issue. It seems to be growing, but we don't know. We don't have the data. And that's the thing that we need to know, how many we have that's homeless in this city? Is that number is growing? Why is it growing? What are some of the things that cause homelessness? I'm really impressed with the organization Eden Village. Nate and their organization are doing very positive things to move people from homelessness, joblessness, and moving them and transitioning them back into society. Victory Mission has a good program as well. So, I'm impressed with those programs. I'd like to see us and the city foster those type of programs in some way to reduce the homeless population in our city.
Yeah. I have a couple, a couple more questions here in our time is, what would you say to a young person or a parent of young people of, how do you start shaping inside of them this civic responsibility and duty?
I mean, that's a good question. That's an excellent question. We have a number of boards and commissions in the city. We need people to kind of volunteer their time to work on some of these commissions. We got a tax board. We have environmental board. We have advisory boards, a number of boards. And that way, once people serve on this board, they get connected to the city. They feel, they take on ownership of the city and the decisions that are made. And they feel, and we need them. We really do. And it's important that citizens get involved, they voice their opinions, if they got a concern. And I always like, my wife always gets, gets on me about, you know, when I go to church or somewhere, I sit there and listen to people and talk, because I'm a great listener, and she's ready to go. But, but I think it's important that we listen to our constituency, our citizens. And we also should encourage them to get involved in any aspect of the city, whether it's our boards that we need to fill and advisory councils. That's probably the best avenue to get involved in the city. And that way, you can steer the direction of where the city is going.
Yeah. Well, one of the things we talk about at North Point often is the idea that we have a natural tendency, we were born with arrows pointed in, and the tendency is to think life's about us, that we have to flip that arrow out and live to serve. And we want to do that. The Dream Center is probably our favorite expression as our church of how we can do that collectively. But it cannot just be a program or a building. It has to be something every one of us, especially those who are following Jesus, that say, "Man, my arrow has to go out. I have to serve. I have to figure out a way to be a blessing to my community, a blessing to my city, a blessing to those around me." And so, I love that you're doing that. What do you, what do you see, what do you see for your future? Anything, do you have some bucket list goals that you have that you want to accomplish? You've accomplished a lot.
Thank you.
What else do you have in store?
Well, right now, my, my goal is, is as I started my private practice, my daughter, my youngest daughter told me that she wants to go to law school.
Okay.
So, she is planning on going to law school next year. And I told her, I said, "Well, I'll continue to practice, practice law long enough to turn this over to you." So, that's my goal. That's one of my goals. My other goal is perhaps, other goals I may have, you know, is to continue to, to be involved in the community and helping it in any way I can. And like you said, the Dream Center is part of that mission that we all have, building relationships with people who are, who are looking for something out there, who are lost. And your organization, your church, and all of us should play that role.
Yeah.
If we are blessed with gifts, we're blessed with the means, we should be able to, like you said, pass that outward, not keep it inward and spread those blessings to others. Too much is given, much is required.
That's right. Couple of good law schools. There's one in Spokane, Washington. They got a decent basketball program, Gonzaga. You can consider that. And there's also one in Missouri. It's got very little rainfall. She should check it, check that one out.
She actually is gonna go to UMKC.
Okay, very good. Another Kangaroo. Very good. Well, those who are listening are. Well, those who are listening, our North Pointers who are listening, it's our desire that you would find a way to give back. Is, is we fundamentally do not want to be the kind of church that is us against the world or us against our city or us against the government. The government is us. We are the representation of every, everyone we rub shoulders with. So let's get the salt out of the shaker, season this community. My prayer, thank you for doing what you're doing. My prayer is God would bless you. God would bless the leadership of this community. Thank you for serving us in such a way. Thank you for being an arrows-out focused individual. And North Point, let's come right alongside. Get involved or we can get involved and be the light of Jesus in any dark place he can put us in. So thank you, Abe. We'll continue this at a Waffle House.
That's right.
Sometime soon, maybe even a Buc-E's lobby. So thanks for listening to us.
Thank you.
Hope you have a great week. And, and we, we are excited that you are a listener of The Riff.
Thanks for listening to this episode of The Riff. Submit a question for the podcast at northpointchurch.tv/podcast. We'll have a brand new episode every week, wherever you find podcasts.